Good evening. It's possibly seven o'clock on April the 4th, so we're gonna call this city council meeting together. We appreciate all of you coming. We're gonna begin with prayer, and we got Dr. Louis Lee with First African Baptist Church here. And Dr. Lee, if you would, come up and pray with us. Stand.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you today, and we come with hearts of gratitude for the call to serve. Father, we thank you for the opportunity that you invested so much in intellect and ability, Father, and presentation, that we can stand in your stead and make decisions that are better for the betterment of our people, Father. We pray your protection over the city of Goldsboro, over every home, child, every police officer, every school, every church, every building, Father, that your love and your protection will shine round about, Father. And God, we pray in advance for the conclusion of this meeting, that things will be set forth, that lift up humanity, Father, that bring us together, that bring our hearts to a common bond, Father, steeped in love and unity and kindness and provisions one for another. And God, we just ask that you would continue to bless us until we meet again, that your love will shine round about us, Father. And we conclude this prayer, understanding that we're standing in the stead for all people of all faith, Father. But personally, Father, I'd be remiss in my duty if I just did not remind you that you're still our risen Savior, and we thank you in the name of Jesus the Christ we pray. Amen.
Dr. Lee, thank you for taking the time to come pray for us. With that, we're gonna do the pledge of the flag. I think there's a scout in the audience, Nicholas Stansfield. Nicholas, are you here? Well, come on up and help us with the pledge of allegiance, if you would, please, sir. I think you're with troop 92, and this is like your last thing you have to do before you get your eagle? Is that what I've heard? Is that correct? Well, come on up then. Let's get it done. All right. You ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming, Nicholas. Thanks for helping us with that. Good luck with your eagle. Okay. Madam Clerk, we'll have roll call.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Carson Jacob.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Broadway.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Councilmember Haines.
Everyone's here. We've got the approval minutes, A1, the city council retreat, February 24, 25, 2016.
Move to a doc.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A2 is the joint meeting of the city council and the Wayne County Commissioners on March 1, 2016.
Move to a doc.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comment period. This is where anybody in the audience can come and speak nicely about anything you'd like to talk about for the next three, for you have a three-minute timeframe. Oh, well, it's one of my favorites. I'm already back, and she hasn't even left yet hardly. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. Stevens, my name is Vickery. I am LaTerry Ward. I reside at 1714 East Holly Street, Goldsboro. Presently, I am the chair of the James T.C. Coley General Fund Committee. The committee voted to request the gymnasium at the WA Foster to be named the James T.C. Coley Gymnasium. In September 2012, a committee member went before the Recreation Advisory Committee to make that request. In October 2012, the advisory committee approved the name with no opposition. I noticed the wrong name appeared on the minutes, and when I asked about it, Felicia Brown, the supervisor, told me it was a typo and that Mr. Coley's name was voted upon. I asked that the committee amend the minutes to make that correction because in the future that may become a problem. The dedication of the gymnasium was made during the Dillig Goldsboro Alumni Weekend in 2013 with the city council member and the city manager present. I asked why Mr. Coley's name does not appear on the new gymnasium. I was told by Scott Bernard that we needed to go back before the advisory committee again. I asked Scott Bernard on the 22nd of March as to why did we need to do that. To this day, I have not heard from him. We are appealing to you tonight for an answer. We followed the city's procedure, and the gym was dedicated. The city relocated the WA Foster Center with the gym. Why do we need to go and request it again? As former Director of Community Affairs, I do not know that, I have not seen a policy or city ordinance that states that once a building has been removed or relocated, that you have to go back and get any other activities, don't rededicate it for that. And I believe if something happened to Goldsboro High School, and it was to be rebuilt or relocated, I don't believe the school board would ask us to go back and appear before them to rename the Norvell T. Lee Gymnasium. So that is why we're here tonight.
All right, well, how about here's an answer. This is the first time we've heard about this, or at least the first time I've heard about it and don't know anything about it. So my answer to you is give us two weeks for our next meeting. We'll figure out what the deal is, what the solution is, and we'll have an answer somehow one way or the other in two weeks.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, Mr. Stevens.
Mr.
Attorney Billy Strickland. I do not have a residence in North, in Goldsboro. I live in the county, but I do have a 112 North Williams Street property, which is my law office. Very briefly, I represent George, George Humphries. That's one of your first items on your consent agenda. I'm a little confused and befuddled and kinda just basically asking you guys to table this issue for further discussion. It's my understanding that when it first went through planning, there was nobody that objected to it, nobody had any problems with it, all the plans were handed in like they were supposed to, and then on the last planning meeting, it was said that, I heard through the grapevine, because I didn't go, because I'm not allowed to speak anyway, that it was recommended not to approve with no opposite, and nobody's ever said anything against this, but all of a sudden, these few fellows said, no, we're not gonna approve it. And now it's on your consent agenda to not approve his conditional use permit. It's in general business, it's across the street from the McDonald's, which is Clarita's Nursery and 70. Mr. Mayor, you know that very well. I believe there's a farm you used to own right behind it.
Right.
And one of the complaints I heard from some of the council members is, well, it just looks like junk, or there's some trailers out there. Actually, I've addressed that with George, and George knows there's not any trailers that's supposed to be out there. But more importantly, who's gonna spend thousands of dollars to comply with the city rules and the city regulations and plant trees and put gravel in just for you guys to say, no, you can't get your conditional use permit? So that's why the plan was put forward. It was put forth exactly with all the compliance, with all of your rules and all your regulations, to make sure that we can comply with that. It's not in compliance now. If it was in compliance now, I wouldn't be standing here. But because it's not in compliance, all that stuff was submitted to you guys, saying, this is what we're gonna do to allow us to come to compliance, and we're just asking for conditional use permit. And all it is, is George, he really just wants to sell it, just kinda like the McDonald's lot. He just wants to sell it, have somebody build a commercial lot there. But in the meantime, in order to make a living and to pay his taxes, he's got a little bit of business with a little bit of farm equipment and things like that. It's not gonna be expanded much more, and yes, I've gotten on him about the trailers, but he owns the body shop behind it, he owns the lot behind it where the storage units are, his son's house and things like that, and so we've already fixed that. If you go by their day, I went by their day on my way here from the house, and there was no trailers there, no, because what happens is a wrecked 18-wheelers, that's what I'm talking about. He'll put it out there and I'll tell him, you can't do that anymore. And if you look at the plan that was submitted, most of that junk, a lot of it'll be gone, and also it'll be lined with trees and in compliance. So I understand that it's on the consent agenda right now to deny. I'd ask that you pull that, table it. If there's any, no one's ever come with a question or said, hey, Mr. Strickland, we need this, or this would make it better, or we'll approve it if you do this. Nobody's said that. It's just, yes, it's fine, don't worry about it, then all of a sudden, no, we're gonna deny it. So if you will take that into consideration, that's my own three-minute warning, so don't waste your time.
Good.
You know how attorneys are, we are very methodical, we're not anything. But in conclusion, I do appreciate your time, but please try to, I would appreciate if you pull that. If you have any questions or anything you want for us to come to compliance, George is more than willing to do, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Did you set your timer too?
You know what? I didn't do that, but I should, because if anybody's ever met a Jernigan, we've never only spoken for three minutes. I know most of you, but my name is Andrew Jernigan. I work for Jernigan Furniture. I am the president of the board for the DGDC. I think it's worth notating that I do not live downtown. I do not have a business downtown, nor do I mean for the immediate future, plan to have a business downtown. I was at the work session earlier, and I've done a few work sessions with you guys recently. I hadn't been in here in five years. Last time I was here was for a very similar cause, when we were trying to get the first phase of Streetscape done. It was not a popular thing. It was kind of a scary thing, and I still remember that a few days later, we made front page of the newspaper, and my parents called me, I was out of town, said, Andrew, my God, what have you done? No one's going to shop at Jernigan Furniture because this is wildly unpopular. Then I fast forward two lights up downtown this past, this past year, and I was with my 90-year-old grandfather, who saw downtown at its best 80, 70 years ago, and he said, Andrew, I'm so proud of Goldsboro, because in my 90 years, I've never seen it look this amazing. I've never seen this many people downtown at once. That brings me to why I'm up here. I'm specifically here, I would ask for another vote, for the vote that was two weeks ago in regards to applying for Tiger this last round in order to finish off the Streetscape project, which is part of our master plan. There are two things that I firmly believe in life. One is that the downtown of a community is the heart and soul of that community and that city. As we all know, with our doctors, I'm only 33, and he has already told me that I need to watch what I eat, lower the cholesterol, keep my cardio up every day, and make sure I take my fish oil. We have to take care of the heart of who we are, as well as our community. I don't like it, but I do that 45 minutes no matter what. I also firmly believe that anything worth doing is worth doing correctly. I do not believe that anyone should ever start something unless they're willing to finish it. I don't know if anyone knows that kind of person in their lives that starts a project but never finishes it. Maybe they do 80% of something, but if you've ever seen their businesses, or their houses, or their yards, everything inevitably always ends up looking terrible. So that's why I'm here today to ask you guys, we have, and thank you, by the way, for making the previous investment to get us the first three phases, or 80% of the way there to finish our downtown. That's amazing, it took a lot of courage. What I'm asking is that you give us the opportunity just to try and go after this $4.1 million of free money that we will not agree have to pay, so that in the future, when no matter what, we're going to have to finish Streetscape, rather than the city of Goldsboro having to come up with $5.25 million out of its pocket, we can do it now and only spend 1.3. And by the way, this is money that's going to help us get this mixed housing development down here, and with the taxes off of that alone pays for that amount of money. Thank you guys for having me today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Come on.
I appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. It is wonderful to see each of you again. Of course, my name is Jennifer Strickland, and I live out in the Rosewood community. I am here again this evening to ask you to deny the rezoning request by Adair LLC, and if not out and out deny it tonight, at least consider pulling it from the agenda for further discussion. I wanted to start tonight by saying that I am sad to be here. I have been told by people that wish to remain anonymous that the decision on this property was made before the last meeting when I spoke with you, and I pray that's not the case. I'm sad because this issue is causing a rift in our community. I love my neighbors. I have been in the Rosewood community my entire life. My family has been a part of the community since the founding incorporation of this county, and I love my neighborhood. I'm a lifelong resident of Rosewood, where we welcome folks to join us and be a part of us, where if you get sick, you're absolutely gonna find a jar on every store corner looking for donations, and every church is gonna do a fundraiser for you. I'm sad because I believe in individuals' rights of property owners, and I'm now being placed in a position to speak out against a neighbor's property rights because they infringe upon my own. I support progress, new business and growth, but it must be properly managed to ensure the safety and future health of a community. We are a county that is rooted in agriculture, but agricultural land is being gobbled up by housing that is not needed. A quick look at the U.S. Census from 2010 will tell you that. I'm sad because there's a new road beside my house that runs past my granny's house and the home of my ancestors that has created a situation where my children can no longer play outside safely. Just a few short years ago, there was a shooting at Walmart across the street that led to an armed gunman coming next to our property, and my children and our day laborers that were working in our strawberry field had to evacuate to our house and behind wooden fences as the sheriff's department swarmed with guns and with dogs. I'm sad to say that just seven years ago, the Rosewood community was faced with a large housing project similar to this, and they spoke out against it because of the negative effects on the schools and the community and on our property values. But here we are again with a larger project. People think we're opposed because it's a Section 8 project, when it's not. We get that, we're not stupid. But an 80-unit apartment complex that people are in and out of does not build the community up, but it tears it down. And now I'm standing in front of seven men, none of whom represent me or my neighbors, none of whom will be affected by the next election, but each of whom will now take a vote on something that will determine my personal property rights, my personal value, the property value of my neighbors whom I love, and the condition of our community. And I ask you again, please, to table this or deny it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
So I'm Ruth Glisten. I am a property owner downtown, a residential property and a store. I would like for you to remember all those intelligent words spoken by Andrew, especially the fiscal part. If we're going to have to finish these and need to finish the train station and the corner commons and all these things to bring this to 100% completion, and it is going to cost taxpayers over $5 million out of the pocket, out of our taxpayer revenue, could we not at least go for the $4 point plus million? If you get it, say, no, thank you, or go, really, could we use this? Maybe we can do this? And I appreciate, as Andrew said, the heart of downtown is really imperative to bringing in companies and huge, you know, corporations, which is gonna make us a great tax revenue, a great tax base. But I appreciate that all these other outlined communities are important. I think bonds are a great way to go. I know that bonds are not successful here typically, but you do have a really strong component in the merchants association. Let us help you get the bonds for these other outlying people, because we can do it. We see people every single day. You convince me that it's something we need, and I'm easily convinced, because I love Goldsboro. I am a source, Antonio, would you not be? I know every merchant downtown wants Goldsboro to grow, every single one of us. So if it's bonds we need to push forth to get money for all these other projects, then let's do it, let's do it together. Let's build up downtown, let's build up all the outlined communities, let's work together, let's bring our merchants together to help you pass these bond referendums, the things you need to get all these other projects going too, because I appreciate our parks are vital, the green spaces are vital. They are, there's not saying they're not, but they're equally, they're equally important. And if we can build downtown and finish this, all of us can work to get all this done too at the same time. So I'm asking again for you to please consider going for the free money. If you get it, yay. If you decide, yeah, we really don't want it, but we got it, at least try.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to address the same subject from a slightly different point of view. I know that there's been a huge investment in time and inconveniences and money to get us to the point that we are, but downtown revitalization is the business that I'm in, and I work for many, many cities to try to go through the same process. We've come a really long way, but I'd just like to say that we're not there yet, and the reason why we should care about getting there is because if we get to a certain critical point, then you're gonna see more investment and larger investments, and we've seen perhaps the first one already with the apartment complex that they're thinking about doing. That's gonna be worth a huge amount in tax revenue, as they pointed out in the work session today. The part that we're thinking about investing in is basically from that block down south, and the city owns a lot of that property down there, so by improving that, you're improving your own prospects for investment. The fact that we had attracted a company that wants to build a $15 to $20 million project, I don't think that that would ever have happened downtown if it hadn't been for the big sacrifices that everybody made and the money that we were able to get from Tiger to make that happen. So I think that those last two blocks are probably the biggest potential investment you can make, because it's gonna have a return many times over, and that return in tax revenue and employment and housing is gonna mean that you're gonna have a lot more money to help the entire city. So basically, what you've done is you started a small fire, but that fire is not necessarily gonna stay lit, and you can't just walk away from it and assume that everything's gonna be okay. I think you have to tend it until you know that it's gonna stay lit and help light the whole city. So I'd like to ask you to consider, reconsider your vote for the sake of the economic health of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anybody else like to speak?
Yes, sir. My name is Warren Bishop. Moved to Goldsboro in 1970, lived in the city. Twenty-three years later, decided needed a little more space, moved out into the county. At 29, I decided that it was time to downsize, saw the light, saw downtown, moved into downtown, took a building, rehabbed it. I live in an apartment in, and if you can, if there's a window on this side of the building, you can look across the corner behind a little bank over there, and you can see an awning blue and white and red doors on the front. I live there and have two apartments for rent. My granddaddy was a smart man. It took me a long time to learn that, and the older I got, the smarter he got. I hope that I've been that way with my children. I hope that as a community, we are growing smarter as we grow a little bit older in our town and our city, that we have values that we want to see kept, that we want to see a lifestyle that is wonderful for all of the community, for everybody. So I hope that we will pursue the Tiger grants, keep our name in the pot. It's kinda like you can't win the lottery if your name's not in the pot, if you haven't bought a ticket. So I hope we will reconsider that measure to go for the $4 million, $5 million, whatever it is that we would have, we would match and put forth to the betterment of our community and to finish the goals and objectives we have for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else wanna speak on anything? God, I thought I almost had it.
You keep asking.
I might not make that mistake again.
David Glisten, 135 South Center Street. Well, I'm just gonna tag on with everybody else, but first, I'd like to say thank you to Councilman Williams for trying to bring this up in the other, in your working meeting, and I understand why you couldn't, but Antonio, it was my councilman, and so thank you very much. But I would like for you guys to reconsider. Everybody said, you know, we've got this thing started, let's keep her burning. So if you would, just, you know, somebody, if you wanna bring it back up again, please reconsider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? All right, well, with, oh my gosh.
You know it's bad.
Come on, sugar, just get up here and talk. Let's go.
Okay, I'm Amy Bauer, and I live on Virginia Street, down by the train station. Everybody knows that. But I wanna tell you, I worked at Main Street, and I had to work in registration because I have a really bad leg, but I met this great man who came through the registration. Actually, I helped him several times, and he's the man in charge of the railroad. And I think his first name was Jack. And he and I had quite a conversation. I go, when you bring in the railroad? Get the railroad in here, we want that railroad in here. We wanna connect to Raleigh, let's get that going. He said, we've got the railroad, you need to finish the station. And I go, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on the Tiger grants to get that done. So come on, guys, you know, other than Amtrak, all we need is to finish the station, we can tech to Raleigh, and here comes your tax dollars that you're all looking for for other projects in town. Downtown's not the only place in Goldsboro that I go to. You know, I shop all over, I go to all the restaurants, you know, I live in all of Goldsboro, but this is an important part to finish. We started this, I bought our house 10 years ago? Five years ago, I'm sorry. See, and you promised that we would finish this project, so I'm hoping you'll keep your promise and at least go after the Tiger grant. Come on, let's see if we can get it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, well, with that, we will close the public comment period. Are y'all good? Seriously, everybody's good? All right, we're gonna close the public comment period. I will make one comment on the Tiger grant, just so everybody knows. We did vote on the Tiger grant at our last meeting. The vote to apply for the Tiger grant failed by a four to three vote. Since then, I think there's been a lot of conversation about the Tiger grant amongst folks in the public and maybe other council members. To my knowledge, no council member has changed their mind. It was a nay vote. There's no need to bring the Tiger grant vote back up for a vote unless somebody changes their mind, and if they change their mind, then I'm sure they will bring it back up. So that's where we are at this point on the Tiger grant. With that, we'll move to presentations.
Mayor, Council, I'd ask Fay Reeves come up and talk about our star program, and we'll recognize our first awardees.
Good evening.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. After receiving notification of an anonymous monetary donation to establish a recognition program for employees, a group of department heads were tasked with developing not only the criteria and guidelines to recognize our employees, but also a name for the program. After several discussions and drafts, we selected the Golden Star Award, which stands for special thanks and recognition of our employees. The award is to recognize employees in a timely manner for their contributions to the organization and the community. These contributions go above and beyond the normal scope of responsibilities and their day-to-day performance of their duties. The award focuses on customer service and professionalism, problem solving and quality improvement, teamwork and community partnership, or other professional and personal achievement in a way that relates to the city's values and beliefs, which are integrity, professionalism, collaboration, and promoting, and promoting the quality of life. Anyone having knowledge of such characteristics displayed by an employee or a group of employees may submit a nomination. The monthly recipients will receive a monetary award, a certificate signed by the manager and the mayor, and a pen signifying their star status. With that being said, I would like to introduce the first group of recipients to the council and would ask that they come up along with the nominated individual who will share a brief statement as to why these individuals are our first selection of stars.
All right.
And not, I won't be selfish tonight, so I'll allow the group to come up first before the individual recipient comes up. So if I could please get team Alan McCoy, Kenneth Spencer, Antonio Vaughn, Charles Gin, and Mike Reed, please come forward. And I believe tonight we have someone who would like to speak on behalf of these gentlemen and why we're picking, why we chose them as our first star recipients.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for your time. It is my pleasure, get up here, I'm gonna introduce Don, he's gonna actually say a little bit about, this is all his crew, and except for Mike Reed. Mike Reed's, we borrow him, we're now there for Streets in Stormwater. But Public Works, this is what we do. When there's an issue, they pull together as a team, they get the job done, and this is, although this is the first time they're getting recognized for it, this is really a common occurrence, but that, and Karen Bouchier was actually one that recommended them in there, but since her absence, Don, I can talk a little about those.
Yeah, the guys, we had a leak on Virginia Street, ended up being four leaks that night. It was cold, I don't think I've ever been any colder in my life than I was that night. These guys came in, they worked all night. Mike Reed, Charles Gin, like you said, they work on the streets in Stormwater, but we needed them, it was a holiday, so they came. My guys, Alan was actually out of college, his gout was flared up, he couldn't even My guys, Allen was actually out of college, his gout was flared up, he couldn't even walk. He hobbled all night. And then Kenny and Antonio were in the hole, in the water, and wet, and that's why we felt like that they were good nominees for the award.
Thank you very much. At this time, we would like to ask that the mayor, if you would come forward, please, and present these certificates and their monetary award along with the pen. Mr. Charles Ginn or Ginn? I apologize.
Oh, you got to check in. I'll take the check, and you take the award. You keep the award, I'll take it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Stay right here, because we want to get a group picture.
Yes, we do.
So, Tyler.
Please, seriously. Mr. Allen McCoy. Mr. Mike Reed.
We're not going to miss you, you know.
Mr. Kenneth Spencer. And Mr. Antonio Vaughn.
All right, so let's get, y'all come back here, and let's get a picture.
We want it to look good, so we're going to let his face say out.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call up Ms. Joy Wright, please. This is why I said I wouldn't be selfish tonight. I'd let the group go first, and then I'd save the best for last. Joy actually works in Human Resources, and Joy is our, is our benefits rep, but she's a lot more than that. I don't, if anyone has any idea what open enrollment is like, trying to do open enrollment for 400-plus employees along with 300-plus family members, doing two open enrollments within a six-month period, because we were changing plans, really took a lot of work and extra work for Joy. Not only did she get out the information about the plans, she also assisted individuals and steadied up their family members for the plan. She even went so far as to continue to do census on employees and make sure that she made special telephone personal calls to those individuals, reaching out to them to make sure that their family and also the employee continued their coverage without, without missing a beat. And I was so thankful to have someone who really knows, Joy's worked, she's worked in hospitality, she's worked in, and she's worked in insurance, she's worked in HR, so she really has a great grip on our benefits, and I really do value her service and her work as she does for the city and for the community. So, Joy, for that, I just want to say thank you. And so, at this time, I would like to have the mayor present the award to Ms. Joy Wright.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move to the consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Mayor and Council, your consent agenda, you removed item G as an action item, so it consists of items C through R minus item G.
Can you have the consent agenda before you?
Make a motion to adopt.
I second the motion. All right, roll call vote.
Mayor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Fratton Acoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Consent agenda passes. Now, we've got one item for individual action, and I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Acoff.
All right. I make a motion to, that Mr. Allen, Mayor Allen, go be reclusive from voting on this issue or discussion.
Second.
That being said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Stevens. G.
Yes, sir. Do you want us to present item G to you? Jimmy would be happy to do that, or if you just, from that standpoint, if you want to approve of what you have, you could do that.
I make, I make a motion, we approve item G.
Second. All those in favor? Say aye. As opposed? Like most, it passes. You can ask the mayor to come back in.
Okay, so with that, we got the city manager's report.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. I have a couple of things I'd like to share this evening. First, I did want to announce to the community, for those that missed it, we did open the WA Foster Recreation Center today at 3:00. And so, if you didn't make it by today, it will be open on whatever regular scheduled hours are, but it will be open a lot in the coming days. So please make an effort to get by and take a look. I think you'll be very pleased and impressed with our new WA Foster Recreation Center. Second item I would mention is our Goldsboro Event Center. We'll have our open house Tuesday, April 5th, from 5:00 to 7:00. We would invite anybody in the community that would like to come, take a preview of what it looks like, but it is open and available for rentals, and you would call the Paramount Theater to book the Goldsboro Event Center. But I just want to make sure everybody's aware, both those facilities are open as of this week. At this time, I would ask Chacoel Simpson-Carter, if she'd come forward, and just as I go through some changes in our community affairs and community development divisions. Chacoel, does any of your family want to come forward right here? You want to, they're welcome to if they'd like to, and they can move around and take pictures if they'd like to. That's totally up to you, where they, where they go.
But Mayor and Council, as you know, Ms. Luteri Ward retired last week as our community affairs director, and I will tell you, anytime we have an opening, we discuss the need for the position, look for changes that we feel might enhance the services that we are providing to the community. Over the years, we have discussed the possibility of merging the community affairs and community development into one department. With the retirement of Ms. Ward and reviewing the work that her department accomplishes each year, I did not feel that eliminating this position made sense for Goldsboro. What I believe will improve our service to the community without increasing our full-time staffing is to merge the community affairs department and the community development division into a community relations department. This new department will report to Randy Guthrie, my assistant city manager. Tonight, I would like to announce that I have selected Chacoel Simpson-Carter as the director of the community affairs department, effective April 1st, 2016. To tell you a little more about Chacoel, she was born in Wayne County and graduated from Southern Wayne High School. She completed an associate's degree in accounting from Wayne Community College, a double major in business administration and accounting from North Carolina Wesleyan College, and a master in general business administration from Capella University. She worked for wages as a foster grandparent outreach specialist until 2010, when she came to work for the city as a rehabilitation community development specialist. When the community development administrator position became available, Chacoel was promoted in this position, where she has served since August of 2013. When Chacoel became the administrator, she asked if we, we asked if she felt the need to replace the rehabilitation community development specialist position she had vacated. She told us she felt she could handle the workload, which would allow more of our CDBG money to go to the community rather than pay a salary. While I had some concern about the workload, Chacoel made it look easy. When asked questions by city council or others, she had well-thought-out responses. She was willing to take on new tasks, dedicating as much time as needed to ensuring its success, such as our feeding program for hungry children that we ran last year. Chacoel has been asked by larger communities to come and assist with their CDBG program and administration, but the ultimate compliment came from our HUD representatives who audit the projects and files that Chacoel is responsible for overseeing. They shared with me that the system that Chacoel has developed is an example they share with other communities and could not say a good, enough good things about her organizational skills, project oversight, and documentation that is absolutely cried with federal funding. They just gloated and gloated, and oushed and oushed and gushed about her ability to manage the project, because they had concerns with one person managing everything we do as well, but Chacoel had convinced them otherwise. I would like to thank Chacoel's family, husband Keon, daughter Ray Yana.
Ray Yana.
Thank you. Nephew Miki.
Mackay.
Gosh, Mackay, I worked on it, too. And other family members, Penny and Katrina. And while I am sure they have been supportive of Chacoel in her previous role, their continued support will be, will be needed so that she can excel in her new role and successfully combine these two areas. Again, thank you all for your continued support of Chacoel. We think a lot of her on this side, and we appreciate you supporting her at home. Chacoel has a wealth of knowledge about the CDBG rules and regulations and knows the Goldsboro community. I'm excited to have her in this new role, and look forward to working more closely with her. And at this time, I'd like to say congratulations to Chacoel and ask that she say a few words. Chacoel?
Well, good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
I would be wrong if I didn't, first and foremost, give honor to God. I want to thank my city manager, Scott, for allowing me this opportunity to further expand what I love to do, which is helping individuals and bridging any gap between city services and citizens. I've spoken to you all on several occasions about my humble beginnings, and those humble beginnings is why I am a city employee and why I'm as dedicated as I am, along with my family. I take much pride and joy in being a city employee and getting to work alongside amazing supervisors and coworkers, as well as you all. It makes it worthwhile, it makes me more determined to do whatever I can do. I want to thank my husband and my daughter, and especially my nephew, because I have him most of the weekends. And I say that because there are many weekends that my husband wakes up and I'm not home, but he knows where I'm at, and I'm at the office, and he gives me a little time to say, okay, it's about time for you to come home. And my nephew and my daughter, I had to say that with them, as a mother and aunt, I should be taking them to the park, but I bring them here to work. And I show them different things of how to organize and things, and I just want to thank them for putting up with that, because for me to be as committed as I am to the city of Goldsboro, it takes my family. It really does, and it takes my family. And I thank you all. I won't stay long, because I've been told by one of my former supervisors I can be long-winded, so I won't do that. But in closing, I want to say to Scott, to the mayor, city council, and my amazing city of Goldsboro family, that I do not see as just coworkers, they are my family, I want to thank you for your sincere condolences during the passing of my baby brother a couple weeks ago. I'm sorry, I was snuck. That has meant more to me than you all will ever know, how you reached out to me. And for that, I will not let you down. I will stay committed to the city of Goldsboro and to their citizens and make sure that we make our city even more greater than it is, and I thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hey, Scott, I need, I need just like a photo moment, I want a picture with you. This look good on Facebook. But you got a smile on you.
She makes you look good.
And what she needs to do now is take that young man and sort of bring him to work. Get out of the way. She needs to take you to the WA Foster Center and play in there. Have you been there yet? It just opened today, but you need to be there this weekend. All right, well, come on, let's take a picture. Here, you look, you make it look good, come on. All right, you can come in.
We take two pictures. See if they'll come back, just a second, maybe. See if she can.
And I do apologize, it has been a tough loss for those.
Did you apologize before?
He's a tough person to sell.
I will tell you all, one thing I can testify about, because I said you call emails at 4:00 in the morning, and it's not long, I get the email back. Or I send her an email on Saturday or Sunday, and it's not long, I get an answer. I'm like, well, she probably not says you work in that. Mr. Mayor Allen, I won't call 24/7. But anyway, thank you. I can get it in the foster center, okay?
Thank you. Mayor and Council, that's all I have for you this evening.
Mr. Substituted Attorney. Number four. All right. Let's see, I think last time we started with Mr. Ham, so this time, we'll start with Mr. Williams. Any comments?
No comments.
Mr. Broadway?
Two things, I want to congratulate the Gold Star, and congratulate Chacoel, too. Look, I thought about those guys, how cold it was that night, those Public Works guys were down there fixing that water break, and as a person that has worked utilities before, that takes some dedication to stand knee-deep in the mud when it's cold, so congratulations. That's all I have, so.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I have about three things I want to say.
All right.
Wish Mr. Broadway a happy birthday early, because his birthday is in his week, I believe. Also, I'd like to speak on regards to the Tiger Grant and things. Everyone has spoken and tried to come to us in regards to it and try to either reconsider, and even Mr. Jernigan coming today, I think was a more valid entry to maybe reconsider or think about reconsidering what we can do in regards to finishing up downtown or stuff, make some preparations to come up with other aspects of ways of coming up with that money to get in this Tiger Grant passed. Also, I'd like to say before I close, I want everyone to look very responsibly at what our state is becoming and know what's going on within our current situation. Our city will always be, I believe, a shining beacon throughout the state of North Carolina, but we need to be able to move forward together as a population of human beings and not, how to say, discriminate against anyone. Because I'm like, I've always said like this, I'm legally blind, most of you know that, and until a man, woman, or child of human species can caulk up to me and cure my eyes of the disease that was destroyed by diabetes, no man has the right to tell anybody how to live, love, or respect God, or whatever. I think we need to move forward in that respect, and then we can progressively make our state even better, and in our city as well. So, those are all the things I had to say.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ham?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to also, as Mr. Broadway did, comment on the recipients of the Gold Star Award. And it's, we often see civic employees, federal, state, and otherwise, who are complacent in their jobs. And when we see people like we have seen here tonight, it makes us proud that we have people of dedication, be it working in a hole in the street in cold hours, or being available at a computer to answer the mayor's emails, or, or put in the long hours and long dedication that our city employees have had to do. I've seen numerous occasions here since I've been a member of this council where our employees who have exhibited the professionalism, the dedication that we all want to see and should be proud of, and I commend every one of them for that.
Thank you, Mr. Ham. Mr. Foster? No comment. Mr. Acoff?
Just to reiterate what Councilman Ham said, you know, we do have a lot of good employees, and we need to, to tell the ones that are doing an excellent job, that they're doing an excellent job. But there was one thing I heard about a goat, I heard that Mr. Stevens said that he had pointed Chacoel to the job. Chacoel earned that job. She earned it, and I'm proud of you. I've told you that before, and I mean it.
What? All right. All right, well, with that, we do have five proclamations. I'm not going to read all these proclamations, and I'm going to do it out of order, and I'm going to tell you why. But the first one I'm going to do is you, which is the American Legion Walk for Veterans Proclamation. I was there Saturday and walked with them and read the proclamation, and so, I'm not going to read it again, but I want to tell you, it was quite, quite interesting, and I almost had made a major mistake. I was there, and the guy who was in charge, probably 100 people there, said, hey, I want you to come meet this 90-year-old gentleman, this is a veteran of World War II. So whenever I talked to him, we talked about farming, he told me how one time the city, that he had a ditch at his house, the city wouldn't clean it out, the county wouldn't clean it out, the state wouldn't clean it out, and nobody owned it but him. So he went and got his bike out and cleaned it out, and so we talked for 10 minutes, just, but, but he was 90 years old, and his family kept coming up, and I kept trying to figure out why all this family, he had eight children, and I'm trying to figure why all this family has come from all over the world to see this gentleman walking. has come from all over the world to see this gentleman walking down. But I said, well, he's 90, and okay, that's fine. So anyway, I don't think anything about it. And told him, he lives out on Tommy's Road, lived there forever, and I said, well, I'm going to come see you one day. So at 5:00, I've got on my calendar to go to Best Grove Church, and all it says, it says on Tommy's Road, and it says, it's the 70th anniversary. So I'm like, well, I guess Best Grove is turning 70 years old, and I don't think, I don't know any better, and I don't think. But as I'm going out there, Don Wayne Memorial, I think, golly, I bet these people at Best Grove ought to know this man, he's lived out here all his life. So I get to Best Grove, and I meet the people, and they've got this brochure, well, this 70s, your thing I'm going to is for Freddie Lee Johnson, his wife, the man I had met this morning, and this was a surprise event. So had I known that morning that what I was doing that afternoon, I would have really messed up that event. So, anyway, but, but they, they had a great event, it was a full house, and just some wonderful people. They raised eight children here, and, and just, it's just really, as I told them, what it does, it makes you want to see all folk. The problem today is we don't raise our kids like they raise their kids, and that's one of our problems in America today. But it's quite a family, and so I'm not going to read the proclamations, but, but they were really, been married 70 years, and he just turned 90 years old, and not many people reach that, so just very, very proud of them and glad to get to be a part of that. With that, I'll go to the Physical Fitness Month proclamation, and I'll read it real quick. Whereas physical activity is important to the citizens of Wayne County, and in the month of April, more people in Wayne County will be exercise on a walking and running at the Goldsboro Road Race and Cures for the Colors. Whereas Cures for the Colors is southeastern cancer care signature activity offering the community a chance to participate in helping cancer patients with day-to-day needs while fighting cancer. Whereas cancer is one of the leading causes of death in the state of North Carolina, where an estimated 58,343 new cases will be diagnosed in 2016. Whereas Cures for the Colors' main purpose is to assist patients in eastern North Carolina with food, utilities, gas, and other needs while on their journey with cancer. Therefore, I check out, Mayor of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of April is Physical Fitness Month in the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, and urge all citizens to share their support for southeastern cancer care annual Cures for the Colors to be held April 22nd, 23rd, 2016 by wearing their Cures for the Colors T-shirts to work on Friday, April 22nd, and by displaying a ribbon in support of all cancer patients the entire week prior to the event. I will tell you, this is a big deal, but they've been doing this for years, and I mean, it's probably one of the biggest events in Goldsboro, and we're just really proud of what Dr. Ax and his crowd have done for this, and it's really become a signature event. So if you can help or participate in any way, I would encourage you to do that. The next one we have is Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees reduce erosion of topsoil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean air, produce oxygen, and provide wildlife habitat. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy. Now, therefore, I check out, Mayor of the city of Goldsboro, to hereby proclaim April 29th, 2016, as Arbor Day. And I would encourage all our citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. So with that, we've got all the proclamations done. Did you mention opening WA Foster today?
I did, yes.
You got that? Okay. Did you mention the event center?
I did, yes, sir. But you're welcome to cover that again.
I'll say it again. Well, I do want, if you hadn't seen WA Foster, you ought to go see it, folks. It's a marvelous facility. We're 20 years behind on it, but we have it now, we've got momentum going, and we're going to keep it. I encourage all our citizens to go. It's right off of John Street and Main and Will Park, and I would encourage everyone to go see it. Tomorrow at 5:00, we're opening our event center on Slutcliffe Street. The staff has done an awesome job with this facility. It's your facility, it's for any citizen that wants to rent it, not for free, but for money. We want you to go use it. The more you use it, the better it'll operate, and so we encourage you to come to the open house tomorrow if you'd like to, or just come rent the facility. It's, it's going to be an awesome facility for our city. On WA Foster, on, is it Wednesday?
Thursday.
Don't, Wednesday hearing?
On Thursday, public meeting.
Yeah, the public meeting. On Thursday at 5:00?
Correct.
At the old WA Foster facility on Leslie Street, we're going to have just a public meeting where people can come and make comments about what they think should happen with the old WA Foster. So if you have any comments, any things you'd like to see, I would encourage you to come to that.
And there, just for the, since it'll rebroadcast, it is April 7th, Thursday, April 7th.
Thursday, April 7th, at 5:00.
Yes, sir.
WA, old WA Foster on Leslie Street.
Correct.
Okay. I would like to just let everybody know that on April 14th, 2016, there's going to be a public hearing on the K-46 tanker at the Herman Park Center, which is on Ash Street, and it's at, I think, 5:00, right? It's at 5:00, 5 to 8. And basically, this is just where the Air Force is doing a public hearing for the tanker. There's no set program, I think they're just coming, trying to get people informed, so if anybody would like to go to that, we would, we would certainly want you to know about it. And then lastly, kind of close to my heart, is I got this where the state of North Carolina DOT is doing a litter sweep from April 16th to the 30th. You don't have to wait till April 16th, you can start tomorrow. Just do it safely. Anything you can do to help us clean our city is very important. I appreciate DOT. As a matter of fact, they did, I saw today, 100 orange bags on Stevens Mill Road, so somebody's done that. But I really do appreciate people trying to clean up the city, but we need everybody to clean up their little piece, and I think we'll make some really good progress over the next year. I know it's very important to this council and, and our city staff here. And then lastly, I do also want to wish Councilmember Broadway a happy birthday on April 8th. I guess he's going to get another year older, and we've got to put up with him another year, but that's not all bad, I guess. And with that, anybody have anything else? All right, well, we'll stay adjourned. Thank you for coming.